The first thing we have on the agenda is the citizen's forum. Do we have anything?
No.
Okay, so we have nothing there, so we'll go into discussion. So, first thing is the FY 2021 operating budget.
Okay, so in your packets tonight, it's a lot smaller than it has been. The first one is the entire budget at 15% as we discussed last week. The second set is Jeff had called me and asked if we put it at 20% instead of 15, and he said just have the summary sheets available for that. So, I don't know if you want to go line by line through the budget. If you're okay knowing that the changes from last week are in here, I'll kind of let you guys guide.
I don't think we need to go through it over and over again.
Yeah, we've been line by line twice.
So, bottom line, at 15%, the general fund has 30,000 that could be transferred to fund balance.
What page do you, what pages the...
I don't know if I put it in the right section or not. So, after the actual budget is where the 20% is.
What page is that?
So, it's actually considered page one, again at the very end. So, after page 39, it goes to page one.
About it, thank you.
So, the first, your first set of sheets, though, is the 15%, which is what you guys discussed last week. And this is the entire budget. But on the summary sheets, page one and two, the general fund is in the positive 30,000, and the enterprise is, has a shortfall of 350,000. That was changing it to the 15%, adding and taking out the things from last week, and the career ladders are in there now as well. When we look at, when Jeff had called and asked what 20% would look like, that's what the, after the big packet, you get the page one and two of the 20%, which would put the general fund 97,000 in the black, and the enterprise fund 420,000 shortfall. And to look at it that way...
You say that's after page 39?
That's after page 39. It would be page one and two, and at the top you'll see in the summary sheet, it'll say that with 20% allocation of costs. And Jeff had asked how much rates would have to go up to consider getting the enterprise to break even at 20%. And that would be about approximately 25%.
What are we looking at on the, the 15?
At the 15%?
Yeah.
I didn't calculate that.
That's in the, that's in the other packet, I think. Last one we had.
She's coming up with the percentage.
I'd have to calculate it, I didn't calculate that one at all. But I would say probably close to 20.
20, okay.
But I can calculate that tomorrow and give you an actual percentage.
So, basically what I asked for is if you took and zeroed out the enterprise fund, it would take 25% increase. Going, that would zero it out based on the 20% allocation cost.
What's the revenue that you projected still for the enterprise water and sewer allocations? Has that been adjusted, or is that still...
It's still the same. We haven't, Steve and I were talking about revenues a little bit. We haven't adjusted, because essentially the bills are still there. They're still going to be paid, so I didn't...
No, I'm not saying, I'm not saying now, I'm saying for water and sewer allocations. How many are we...
Oh.
Has that been adjusted at all from the very beginning?
No, that's the four... Hold on, let me get to the page.
What page would that be?
It would be...
Allocation, so that's...
29.
So, I got page two, right? So, it's a...
It's four vacant lots at 80% and four possible existing vacant lots at 100% is what's in the budget for FY 21.
Okay.
Which is a total of about 100,000.
There's no, no bearing on any of the allocations that we were supposed to get by the end of this calendar year.
Right.
These are just four existing lots that have partial allocations paid, and then fair maybe four random lots besides that.
What did we have last year that's not attributed to a public works agreement? Do we have any idea? Like, just, you talk about random lots. We're going to get random lots next year. Do you have any idea how much we actually got from random lots?
I'm trying to remember.
I want to say...
Very many at all.
I would say three, maybe.
That's what I was thinking, a couple.
Four, yeah, three maybe, four, but I don't think...
Okay. I just, the only reason I bring that up is that I think it's something that we may get a shortfall, and like, $100,000, if we don't get it, that's going to be a big hole, right? And, and we may not necessarily get some of those numbers from this year as well. So, it, it just makes that 25% increase, or the 36% increase, or the 20% increase, not necessarily look as good as it actually should be. Relying on water and sewer allocations to fund operations is a, is a...
A no-no, really, but...
Yeah.
On page 30.
Page 30?
Yeah.
Yeah, it shows you the specific breakdown.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, we can keep going.
So, I don't know if you guys want to guide the discussion on 15 or 20% cost allocations? Do you want to change anything in the budget?
I, I think that, I personally still think that 20% is too low. I think 25% is still too low. But I, I'm glad to see that, that, you know, we're considering 20. I think that's a little bit better. I think we've done a good job in sharpening our pencils and, you know, putting on the revisit, which I hope we are going to be able to do at some point in the future.
And the biggest thing is for everybody to understand is the 25% is not in addition to the 4%.
Correct.
It includes the 4% increase, so it's actually 21%, not 25%.
So, when, when, when I saw the proposal of the 20, 25%, I think it might have been last time, and maybe I, I didn't look at it correctly. Was it 25% and then 25% again?
The next, two fiscal years in a row.
Two fiscal years in a row, okay.
And so I can have...
What would that do in terms of, so, instead of it being 36 once, it would be 25 and then 25?
Right.
Okay. Do you know what that would do to the fund balance? How it would, how it would, you know, make it?
No, but I could get a calculation.
I mean, it seems like year one, it wouldn't necessarily be enough.
Right.
But then year two, it would be 25% on top of the original 25%.
Right. Which would ensure some maybe possible capital could get back in the books next year to... I also, after the 20%, you'll have a packet that looks like this. And so, it's got Jeff's original 25 and 25, and then it's got Tim's 4, 10, 36 and 1/2, and 50. All included, just so you could see how it looks on a minimum bill.
What page is that, I'm sorry?
Page, it's like the third one into the second set of packets for 2021.
Yeah, it's after the 20% one and two.
20% allocation.
Yeah.
So, after page 39, it goes into the 20% allocation. It's like the third page of that.
And it looks like this.
Yeah, that's it.
This one?
Yep.
Well, there's, there's three of them.
Yeah, it's a seven, that's a seven page.
If you keep going. That's the 25 and 25, then two pages later, the other one.
Look to the far right, there's two columns, the far right have the different percents.
Yeah, but the one I see says 25 and 25?
Yeah, then two pages or three pages later, you get another one.
10 and, 10 and 50?
And then do two more.
Oh, you're awesome. Thank you.
Just so you could see that, how that averages out on a minimum bill, what an increase would look like at those rates on a minimum usage bill. The final page in that packet just shows you Hyder's original recommendations and his second recommendation, just to kind of show what we kind of lost by not putting any increases close, I guess, to what he was recommending.
Shows the cumulative effect over all the years that he had a recommended percent increase, and our percents that were adopted were not in line with his recommendations.
The problem that I see is that if we did a 25 and a 25, right? And then whatever the four is that we've, you know, got in the ordinance already, I think it would, I think it would be more difficult next year to, to get that 25% in. I, I don't know if that makes any sense. So, even if we say the ordinance is going to be 25% and then 25% and then 4% and 4% and 4%, there's going to be a lot of pressure next year with five council members with already a 25% increase. After a, a year of COVID-19, hopefully things will be better. But if they're not necessarily as good as they should be, there's going to be increased pressure to say, let's take our foot off the gas and not add that extra 25%, right? So, I almost feel like if we're going to make it, if we're going to increase it, we've got to do it once. And whatever the bite the bullet is, let's, let's do that. So, I don't know how you guys feel about that.
Also, keep in mind, you know, when the council has talked about the percents just to make it zero out, that is no capital of all the failing capital, you know, issues we have out there to deal with.
Yeah.
You know, replacement of equipment.
I, I totally agree. I remember when we did the first one, and we put the 4% in there, we made ourselves, put it in the ordinance, that it was automatic unless the council specifically changed it, because we knew that voting for an additional 4% increase every year, there's no way that, that council or future councils would be willing to do that. So, it was much easier to say, it's in there no matter what unless you pull it out. I think the county does that, it's automated as well.
And the intent of the 4% or somewhere close to that percent is to cover normal increased cost of, you know, electricity, gasoline, you know, salary increases, whatever that may be involved.
Yep, okay. Do you guys have any thoughts on, I assume that we're moving into the water sewer user fees, right?
Well, and we can go, I wanted to just give you an idea of what was there, because I know it's a lot of information to process. But if you want to go back, look at budget and first decipher what you want to do for allocation of costs, if you want to do 15%, if you want to do 20, if you want to do more...
I think this is kind of a fluid discussion, right? I think it all kind of flows in, right?
Yes, yeah.
I, I agree with the premise. I mean, it's going to be sticker shock, right, regardless? It's going to be whether you're talking public right now and do a big one, or you're talking next year with, with five people, it's going to be, it's going to get harder with more people involved. I, I don't, I don't disagree with that at all. The other part of that would add to that, too, is, you know, you've got to rip the Band-Aid at one point or another. So, why, why, why continue to wait to rip the Band-Aid? So, if we're going to do a bigger number, we need to decide what that number is going to be, and let's just do it, and get it out of the way, and just be done. So, when the council of five gets here, it's one less thing on their plate that they can focus on, you know, other issues that we have to, to not only get us back to zero, but to, to maintain profitability and the other aspects. Because really, you're talking about different arms of all this, right? Kind of make it, it's all, it's all in together, right? This is just one piece of what we're trying to accomplish. So, if we can, if we can take it upon ourselves to knock one piece off of it, I think that we have to do that. Sticker shock's going to be there regardless. But I think when you talk about voting, we need to limit the chances of getting it shot down, and it's our duty to just get it done. So, let's figure out a number that works and just get it done.
You can see, like, the 25% makes the minimum bill go to 156 from 125. 36 and 1/2 makes the minimum bill go to 181. And 50 makes the minimum bill go to 234. So, gives you an idea on a 6,000 gallon or less bill.
I think it should be 36.5, and then 4% every year thereafter.
I agree.
That's not addressing capital.
It's not what?
It's not addressing capital.
Correct.
I mean, I think it...
I mean, it's fine, I mean, as far as staff recommendation, it's fine if you want, under the current situation, to try to get out of, you know, the hole as far as zero out. But I think the council at some point still got to address, you know, some of the undersized piping that's in town, you know, some of the equipment that's getting old and failing. You know, we've had some recent, you know, issues that we've had to fix, you know, even a couple of things under emergency bases.
I don't think, I mean, we're not going to be able to solve all the problems today, right? No, I mean, I think that, that it's a step in the right direction to start taking chunks off of this thing.
But I just didn't know if you need to make that decision tonight, or whether you want to look at some potential capital to see if you want the number to be higher than 36 and 1/2, or you're just all sold on 36 and 1/2 for this fiscal year and knowing you're going to maybe have another large amount the next fiscal year to address the capital.
So, I, I almost remember saying, after we were getting done with the big project, right, the big Liberty Commerce project, although we have needs to do more infrastructure projects, we need to take a little bit of a breath, right, a little bit of a breather. And so, if we did the 36.5 now, especially with the financial issues that we're having in the economy, then, you know, we may have, we, we may have to revisit it again in a year, or two years, or three years. And believe me, I understand that, that the 36.5 is just treading water. And, and it's important for us to get these things going, but I think...
It's better than tying a rope or a rope around our foot with a cinder block to it, though, too. I mean, you've got to be able to, we have to just start taking chunks off.
What if we did an even 40? I mean, that's going to be a little bit, right? And that would be, because the 4% is automatic, right? So, 36 is actually only 31 and 1/2, right? 32 and 32 and 1/2, 30, 32 and 1/2. So, if we did 40, that would be pretty close.
I mean, we've got to rip the Band-Aid, so...
Jeff, how do you feel?
Loon just sent me a move there.
What's that?
It's maybe the loon one that doesn't agree with it. I think that if you look at the 25, 25, it's more palatable for people, especially with what's going on right now, but...
I think the problem with that, though, as well, is the delta of the, the revenue loss, you know, if you look at the David Hyder thing that we're not going to be getting this year, even if, even if the, the future council has the palate to, to actually make that happen next year, the delta, we're never going to be able to recover from that.
You'll never get the delta.
Well, like, I, I agree with what both of you are saying is the sticker shock is real, right? And I agree that I would love to do 25 and 25. But at the end of the day, we have a council right now that's willing to rip a Band-Aid. And we don't know, just like Corona, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what the next council's going to hold. So, I, I don't know, I think we just have to take action.
All right, so let's, let's write it up for 40% starting fiscal year '21, so in, in...
And then four after.
And then 4% after.
I'm good with that.
All right.
All right.
So, we just wanted to discuss quickly cost allocation, allocation of costs. Is there a percentage between the 15 and 20 that you guys prefer?
Go back to the water, second. Do you want to look at the vacant lot fee?
Yeah.
How many vacant lots do we have?
I mean, it hasn't changed for, you know, many, many years.
How many vacant lots do we have, do we know?
I thought it, maybe, I thought 60 at one point. I'd have to check the most recent count, but...
That's a quarter.
When did it change? When's the last time they...
The last time the, the rate changed, I...
A long time, at least...
I've been here eight years and it was that way before I came.
How long had it been since we changed the rates when we changed them? 10 years?
I think it was like 2014, 20...
And then how long before that?
It was at least 10.
At least 10.
You want to talk about a rate increase for...
I think it's been 27 now.
We're going to ask everybody else, start paying more, that includes...
Hey, I don't disagree with you.
It certainly would be recommended to raise that, I mean...
So, what's that, what should that be?
Do you have to match the percentage? I mean, if, so if we're going to rock up 40 on one, or 36, I guess it would be, plus the four, do you change that?
I mean, it's $27 a quarter, so it's not a whole lot of money.
Yeah, 40% would be...
37, 80.
Call it even 40 bucks?
Granted, it's not, you know, the, the lot's not, you know, having any water consuming, but you're still got to pay for the infrastructure that's there.
And, and the purpose of having it is that we want you to build there. You've got a lot. You should be paying for the infrastructure. You should be, you should be developing in that area. What did you say, 50?
Maybe you can go up to $100.
No, if, if we match the increase, it's like just shy of 40 bucks.
Yeah.
So, you call it even 40 bucks?
All right, so why don't we say 40?
Yeah.
40 bucks or 40%?
40 dollars, make, just make the fee 40 dollars. Because that puts it almost in line with the increase of the other. It's what, like another percent and a half or something?
All right. Anything else on water and sewer?
Is that the only things we've got to look at? Is there other stuff that's in there that hasn't been increased in a long time, or...
No, the Bay restoration percentage goes up to the 46.35 already from the 45. That's for the trash service, and then the Bay restoration's 15 set by the state.
How many accounts do we have outside of town that we're supplying water to? We don't have that many.
Yeah, I don't think there's a ton.
Okay. And, and then, from what I remember, was that double? That's double the regular rate, or is that not double the regular rate?
For outside town lots?
Not quite.
I thought that at some point it was supposed to be double. Like, whatever the amount was, they were getting charged double. So, so here's the reason that I, that I bring this up, right? If we're now taking general fund with the cost allocation, right, and we're not necessarily providing the exact amount of administrative work, people who are outside of town are only paying for water and sewer. They're not necessarily paying their property tax payment amount for the, for the cost allocation. Does that make sense?
Yeah, they're almost paying the proportion of what...
So, so perhaps they should, you know, if we are going to go with 20% or 15% or whatever the number is that's less than the actual, they should be paying more, right? Because they should be making up that amount.
And I can do 40% on, on that, just like we do, and even with sewer only.
I mean, let us verify that what may be affected by that. I'm not sure, you know, whether part of that was back before the schools came into town limits.
That's fair.
Okay, all right, so we'll get back to us on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I want to verify the, the accounting on it.
You put this together with the 40% and show us, just like you have it here?
Yeah, yeah.
And then...
Then how it should with all that stuff that's not...
It'll just look a little higher than this 36 and 1/2, so we can plug it in and form another...
I just want to see the numbers and then...
Yeah, okay.
I could email it if you want. Get it before, this is the last, at this point, last scheduled work session. We can certainly have another one if you feel we need it, but then we present...
I mean, if it's just for this.
Yeah.
I mean, if we come up with other issues, which I don't foresee having a bunch, but just for that, just emails, I'm good with that.
Okay. And are, are we presenting Carolyn on the 14th?
Public hearing?
Yeah.
Public hearing is the 21st is when that's scheduled.
And that's the...
It got moved, right?
That's the constant yield public hearing? Is that what, what it is?
If you guys want a constant yield, you want a constant yield. So, constant yield and budget.
Let's have both of that.
Was going to be on the 21st. So, that also means that on Monday, this coming Monday, the ad for the public hearing has to go in, so I need to double, we have to agree on the tax rate and the public utility.
Yeah, I think the tax rate is going to stay the same. Public utility is our next discussion.
It's the 21st of May. 21st of May.
Yes.
So, I would recommend that anybody that's watching, or anybody out there that wants to put in public comment, now's the time to do it by either email or letter, or however you want to do it, just to make sure that your voice is heard, so...
All right.
And I'm sure we'll do the same thing we did with the charter amendments. We would still keep it open. The public hearing would be open until, I guess it would be the June 11th meeting, since the June 4th got changed, so...
And that's the night that we would vote on the budget? Okay.
So, what do we need to go to next?
So, do you want to pick an allocation of cost percentage, 15, 20, a different number?
I'm not in favor of anything less than 20. I really think we should go with, with 25, but if, if... What would, what is that going to do if we do, if we do the 40% increase, right? What does that do to the revenues? Like, does it make it a little easier to, to have a, a higher cost allocation?
Yeah, yeah. It would, a little bit, yeah. Every 5% of cost allocation is about 60 grand.
So, I would ask, if we, if we waited on the decision for the cost allocation, I guess we need to make that decision tonight, probably.
It would help, at least to look at it. I mean, we still have time, like she said, until the adoption.
But we agreed last week 15, right? And then Jeff, you asked us to see 20? You're good with bumping to 20? I'm good with bumping to 20 if, if Tim is okay with 20?
I mean, I'd really rather see a 25, but that's fine. I mean, for the sake of, let's, let's get this going.
Yeah, we're going to meet in the middle.
25, we were 15, meet at 20.
It should be a 40, but, okay, all right, let's leave it at 20.
Okay. All right. Anything else you wanted to look at within the budget? All right, so the last thing I have on the agenda is the public utility tax.
Great job on those packets, by the way.
So, last time we had begun a discussion on the public utility tax. I had sent over some information about...
It's the last page in your packet.
About what we had done in the past, what the public utility tax actually is. And then, you know, I, I put some more information together today, and you guys wanted to see a number, and I came up with a number, $13 per 100. So, that would actually result in about $817,000 in additional revenue for the town. My recommendation for that would be, how to break that down would be, 195,000 is already incorporated into our budget, right? So, that's already in there based on what we have already. I would recommend we take 400,000 of that revenue and put that in the permanent fund, which will provide for annual interest revenue to the town. Remember, $2.9 million of the permanent fund was pulled out as a result of the infrastructure project. So, this could be an annual thing to continue to build that up. And then the remainder, 221,000, put it in the general reserve, general fund reserves to insulate any revenue shortfalls for FY 2021.
Going to go through the, the other comments?
Sure. Why would we want to increase the rates again? Well, the cost is spread out over all utility payers. So, that's 151 million plus for Verizon and 10 million for Exelon. Our general fund balance was depleted by over $1 million last year due to the road project. Permanent fund was depleted by $2.9 million as a result of the special election. Due to the permanent fund being depleted, we lose out on approximately $69,000 in annual interest revenue. There's considerable uncertainty in projected revenues from our other general fund sources, specifically property taxes and income taxes. This could help any shortfalls. So, a couple of other things about the two major utilities that are paying utility tax in Centerville. Verizon Communications, $131.9 billion in revenue, $15.5 billion in annual profit. They're number 19 in the Fortune 500 list. 151 million customers just in wireless. Delmarva, which is owned by Exelon, is $35.9 billion in annual revenues, $3.77 billion in annual profit. They're number 89 in the Fortune 500 list. They've got 532,000 customers in Maryland and Delaware, and there's 10 million customers total.
I don't know of the latest things we can do, all the way from $3.11 to $13.
Why not?
Okay. You had, you don't have the stuff on here again, do you, for the other jurisdictions?
I don't, but I might have that in, in one of my previous ones. So, Village of Martins addition, for example, they've got a 100% municipal multiplier, so that takes the property tax rate times 100%, and that's what their public utility tax is. Other places like Myersville is 7.04, Friendsville is 4, Brunswick is 6.3. Any thoughts, Josh?
I'm awful ripping Band-Aids, but it seems like a big jump to me, too. I mean... I, I understand the premise. I, I think that, that you're on the right track, for sure. I mean, I, you put thought into it, I appreciate that.
How about $10?
What's your opinion there, Finance Director?
You know, every dollar gives us an extra 62,000 with the, with the expectation of not knowing how revenues are going to be.
Yeah, we know that, but what's your, what's your thought?
I, you know, I...
We know what the math is. We know what the math is.
I know, I think 13's kind of high, but maybe if you even doubled where it's at now for a start, you know, maybe look at six or seven, so it's not, you know, like he said, the two biggest people that it hits are Delmarva Power and Verizon, they're the two that would be, the other two are so small, the difference for them wouldn't be. So, and, you know, with the potential of, you know, if they went to legislative and asked for, you know, not relief possibly, but, you know, hey, they're-
They're burdens.
Yeah, any of that, not that it would happen, and we could say we're going to do this one year and go back, or, you know, to make up some depletion from this year, but...
If they do that, wouldn't it have been better to get the most we could possibly get that one year?
Certainly, I totally understand. I think it's, I mean, I think it's a big, you know, I think when Delmarva Power and Verizon would see it, they would be like, I think it would start some, usually they just mail the check, we never hear from or anything, but I don't know if this would be, hey, a phone call, like, what's going on, I don't know.
They're doubling it up, then-
Right.
But if you think about, if you think about what the town of Centerville has in terms of valuable property, right, it's 6 million, 6.2 million dollars, right? Imagine what Delmarva writes a check for in Baltimore. Granted, Baltimore's a lot bigger, right, or pick some other place in Montgomery County, right, so they're not looking like, oh, man, we're writing this check for $25 million for public utility tax in some town in, you know-
Right. I imagine with the $13, you know, the hundred and some thousand they pay would change to 500,000, so they may be like, you know, whoa.
I also have to assume they have way better software programming than we do, so when that check goes through and it says, oh, it just doubled from last year, it may raise a couple of flags, but-
Take a number.
I would say 7 bucks, I'm good with 7 bucks.
All right. So the other thing that I would say is, I really would recommend if we, if we are raising it, the 195 is already in the budget general fund, I would, I would really recommend that, that we take, like, 70% of that and put it towards the permanent fund, and maybe 30% and put it towards general fund-
I'm all about recouping the whole, you know, so I don't have an issue with that.
What if we did 75, 25?
That's fine.
Okay.
75, 25.
Of the difference between 311 and 7.
And it, I mean, it could be, I don't know if you want to set it in a thing, I guess next year you guys could just revisit, if you wanted to keep it, if there wasn't no flag, you know what I mean, you could-
So you're talking about a little over 400 grands, like 430 grand?
Yeah, every dollar brings us 60.
So then you're putting another 325,000 back in permanent, so.
Try to build that back up.
I mean, that helps, definitely helps. But like I said earlier, too, it's, I mean, we're not going to solve all the problems, you know, today, but we can start taking chunks off of this stuff and just, just get it done.
Now, remember, it's not, it's, it's, the 195 is already in the budget.
That was just off of the, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that was the total, no, we, we didn't raise it, we raised it 2.7, I'm sorry.
So it'd be, so it's 100, almost 180 that would go into the-
Yeah, I'm sorry, so yeah, it's almost 200,000.
180 is better than, better than nothing, right, and that will, that will help.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
All right, that's all I have tonight, unless you guys have any questions.
Great job.
I can put the numbers together that we discussed, and send an email out, just so you guys have some time to review how it looks in the budget.
So we will have both a constant yield hearing and a budget hearing, okay, May 21.
And just, I just want to, because the ad goes out Monday, just confirm, tax rate's still 40, 40.5, and public utility is 7, right, because that'll go out in the ad, both of those.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any more work sessions you feel necessary? So Steve, I'll work on getting this updated, get you a copy to review, and then we can nail it out for everybody to have before. That's all I have for you.
The next regular town council meeting's 14th, right?
14th of May, yes.
That's the one I got moved, because county commissioners are-
Doing budget? That's what we heard, that they're having a budget session, or a hearing or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's a hearing or a work session, but the May 7th and the June 4th meetings that got, were both budget hearings or sessions.
Did everybody sign the signature cards?
I think you had me do that last time, right?
Yeah, there's a new, a new folder right there.
Oh, there's a new one?
We'll discuss it after the meeting closes.
Okay. There's a wire in there, too, I need one of you, just, Tim, I think, signs those.
Okay.
Do we have anything else? No?
No, I just, I do want to say, you know, again, thanks to Optical Galleria, I think this is going well, and I'm glad to see that people are watching it, and-
You know what the engagements were last week, anybody?
With the what?
The engagements on the, how many, how many views we have for-
I don't know, I would have to ask Mike when, when we're done.
We've been over 1,000, right, it was like 1,200 last time you reported?
Yeah, the meeting before, I think Mike said was about 1,200.
That's awesome.
So a couple of other things I wanted to compliment the staff on, this is a fantastic presentation, I mean, every year it's gotten better and better and better, and this is, this really, really looks good, and, yeah, I'm glad this has been, while it's very painful, it's been relatively easy to go through it, so.
Yeah, thank you.
That's it, that's all I have.
All right, can I just promote the close?
I'll make a motion.
Second. All right.
Close session for personnel.
Oh, yeah, make a motion to go in a closed session for purpose of personnel, sorry about that.
All right, second, all in favor?[1779.54]